The time is 6:02, calling the meeting to order. Director Beisel, could you please take attendance?
Carrie Tate?
Here.
Mark Suzyk?
Present.
Stephanie Mom?
Present.
Brian Davis?
Present.
Lisa Hadid?
Here.
Becky Beisel, here. Jessica Dressley, absent.
Thank you. Can we please stand and do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Next up, we need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Sumo? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting. Do they have to be one by one? Okay, minutes for the special board meeting.
I'll check.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the minutes for the special board meeting, 1117. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, approving the minutes of 1122 regular board meeting. Do I have a first and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Director Tate?
Yes, I moved to amend the agenda. There was...
Wait, I'm sorry, Director. Where are the minutes now?
Sorry, yes, amend the minutes. From 1122, in the beginning, there stated that there was a motion to approve the agenda and it was approved with four voting for and two voting against. There was a motion right before that, however, that I had made and Director Dressley seconded. And that was to add a discussion about the superintendent's performance in a closed session. And that motion failed three to three with Director's...
That's been included in the minutes.
Oh, it was added?
That's been amended since you provided that comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't read them since I sent that. Thank you.
With that discussion done, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Finally, the approval of the minutes from the special board meeting on 1130. I need a first and a second?
Sumo?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, at this time, I'd like to recognize all our visitors, both present and those participating online or whatever form of social media that you have. Thank you for being part of our meeting in the public. Moving on from that, we now have announcements and recognitions. Dr. McDowell?
Good evening. Tonight, we want to highlight some elementary programs. The first I'll speak to is we have a before and after-school guitar program that's kicking off that is going to impact... It's available to impact all of our elementary students at all three buildings. It's a six-week program. It's offered through Community Ed. And students actually get to take guitars home with them for the six weeks in order to practice and then they put on an end-of-session performance. The guitars are coming to us from local musicians that are connected to the Onion Grill. So we're very grateful to them for partnering with us in doing this. And so currently, we have 12 elementary students at Pinecrest Elementary that are engaged in this program. So another example of how schools and community are working together to provide unique experiences for our elementary students. Our second highlight tonight, what I think I'll start with before I introduce people, is have Ms. Geeson bring up this video and play that for us.
We had a great time. Bell the weather girl was there. We did experiments. We chatted about all the different kinds of wonderful weather, from blizzards to thunderstorms to hail. A big group, in fact, five classes. Those are all the teachers. They're the heroes there at Pinecrest Elementary. Such smart kids. We made a cloud. We had a wonderful time. This little guy, very smart, had a lot of answers for me, had a lot of good questions for me, had more answers than questions. Very smart. All of them were. Thank you for having me today. I had a great time and I really appreciate you inviting me down. And we had a chance to talk about weather. Haven't had a chance to get into schools for so long with the pandemic that it's so nice to be back, let me tell you.
So with that, we have some special guests tonight. We have some TV stars. Come on up with Ms. Davis from Pinecrest Elementary. Come on up here, gang.
We know you're really good with cameras, but the camera's right there.
So we are so excited for our students to be able to share a little bit of what they learned and what that experience was like having Belinda Jensen visit Pinecrest.
So go ahead. You can say your name first.
My name is Connor Schuster and I learned that that the wind speeds of blizzards has to at least be 35 miles per hour or more to start a blizzard.
My name is Fritz Delling and I learned that the worst storm that there was was when there was eight tornadoes down at the same time in one town.
Fritz had gotten to ask her a question. And so he asked, "What's the worst storm you've ever been in?" And that's the one she talked about.
My name's Allison Jensen and when Belinda came, she taught us how hail forms. And it forms when there's one raindrop that's going, gonna go down to earth, but then wind picks it up and cycles it up and then it gets the air of ice. And it keeps cycling until it's too heavy and then it falls to the earth.
My name is Henry and when Belinda Jensen came before we did questions, we did how to make a cloud in a jar. And we put ice in a bag. And then we put it over a jar with hot water in it. And then we put matches in it. And then you can also put dust in it if you want. And then you let it sit for a while. And then you take the bag of ice off of it and then the cloud will come out.
And so you also saw... So Belinda also has written some children's books and that's what everybody was holding up. And so she just has a great way of explaining things so second graders can really understand it. We've done this a few years ago, so it was great. And I really appreciate Mrs. Davis and the rest of the second-grade team reaching out and having her back. So it was a great day. Thank you, everyone.
How are you going to top that? That's fault. That was terrific. That was absolutely fantastic. That was great, right? Next, we've got a report on the listening session summary.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I'll give a brief summary. We had two residents, both indicated they were residents, come speak to us. The first... Thank you, Mr. Baker. The first spoke on the superintendent's contract that was adopted at our last board meeting and expressed concern and personal individual disagreement with the terms of that contract. And it indicated that that this particular citizen is waiting for some feedback on an email that they provided or asking a question about the contract. So they were just following up and waiting for that. And our second resident spoke to one of the policies that's in our first reading? I'm looking at Director Mom for clarification. It's on the second reading. Policy 417, as it relates to chemical use and abuse, asking for some clarification about marked-up language in that and extending that to asking if the board was going to be making a statement with regard to personnel issue. Personal issue. And we indicated that the board has already chosen to make no comment to that. Those were the two speakers at tonight's listening session.
Thank you very much for that summary. I appreciate that. Anything else to add, Director Mom? Terrific. All right, we're moving on. We've got the superintendent's report next.
All right, tonight, our plan is to utilize the superintendent report time to walk through the annual World's Best Workforce Report. And so for that, we'll bring up Ms. Rachel Larson and talk through World's Best Workforce.
Welcome, Ms. Larson.
Thank you very much. Board Chair Davis, Superintendent McDowell, members of the board, it is a privilege to be here tonight to share information on the state of the district as it relates to MDE's World's Best Workforce Annual Report. This is an annual report that... Just one second. Excuse me for that. Now it's the on button. Thank you, Superintendent McDowell. Great start so far. Teamwork. So the World's Best Workforce Annual Report is something that has been happening throughout the state since 2013, when Minnesota basically enacted their own strategic plan and vision. The World's Best Workforce has five areas of indicators. And that is asking all school districts to be accountable to, measure, and improve all children being ready for school, all third graders reading at grade level, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are ready for career and college readiness, and all students graduate from high school. So within the district, we've aligned our Bridge to Learning Strategic Plan with the interest from the community, the staff, the students, and the families along to the goals that we have in the World's Best Workforce. And they also align to ESSA. ESSA is Every Student Succeeds Act. And I like to reference something people often remember as Leave No Child Behind. That used to be the federal legislation. And that was something that, with the rise of MCA scores in the papers, those days are over. That has been replaced now for a few years by Every Student Succeeds Act. So it's a completely different structure of reporting. This also aligns with all districts' achievement and integration plans. So as you can see, when we lay out the World's Best Workforce Goals, we consider the district's strategic priorities and the anchors and the vision that we're looking to create and meet for all students and families. So when we think about the World's Best Workforce Plan, there is a comprehensive responsibility within the community and the school district. And that first role starts with the Minnesota Department of Education to help provide the support and guidance to public schools as to what areas we need to focus on. Then you have the school district role, which is to create a World's Best Workforce Plan that aligns with curriculum and instruction so that students can be college and career-ready. So that continues with a K-12 trajectory of an educational experience. Then the school board's role. Your role as a school board is to adopt a long-term strategic plan. The strategic plan that we adopted two years ago is that role. So that's why we align the World's Best Workforce with our current strategic plan. Then you also hold annual meetings to provide updates to the public. This is one form of an update of elements that go within the World's Best Workforce Plan. It is not a comprehensive report of all data and all things we do throughout the system. It is truly a 10,000-foot view report. Then we have a World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee that is also known as the Curriculum Advisory Committee. That committee serves both purposes. It looks at the curriculum and instruction goals and merges with all the goals of the World's Best Workforce. So that brings the community and the staff and students and parents into the planning of World's Best Workforce in collaboration. So you will see in June goals set forth by the World's Best Workforce Advisory slash Curriculum Advisory Committee and will approve those goals as we will be changing them for the first time in quite a few years. Then the community's role is to provide input on the plan and support the community's strategies. So the first element within the World's Best Workforce Goals are having all children ready for school. So we actually are reporting the data to you from last school year. So we are not reporting current data. This is the performance of how we met the goal last school year. So the current goal is working toward all students being academically ready for kindergarten. We will increase the percentage of students who meet district criteria of identification of 13 upper and lowercase and eight-letter sounds upon entering kindergarten from 47.1% to 50%. This has been the goal that's been in place for many years. We were looking at changing and adapting it last year, but because of COVID in 2019, 2020, then the disruption continuing, we wanted to make sure that we kept things consistent until we had strong data points to set new metrics or adjust the goals. So what you will see is the results are that we had 57% of our students knowing all their uppercase letters, 48% lowercase, and 43% letter sounds. So a combination score of 39%. That is the score that was the 47.1% that we saw from the previous year. Something to note with this is that this reflects the students that have come into our system from daycare, from other early childhood services. These are not scores that represent Hastings Educational Delivery. It's all students that come enrolled in kindergarten. And so we partner with early childhood to make sure that we align with different programs that provide early childhood, that we help recruit families that may not know about access to early childhood services. So this is a score that is an initial baseline in the fall that tells us who are the students that have what skills when they enter kindergarten. So we complete part of these assessments during the summer with families and schedule those. And some of you may have had those in your own experience. So that's a pretty consistent reporting mechanism that districts use to identify where are our kindergarten students? Because there is an incredible differentiation level between students when they enter kindergarten with reading levels. And so there are lots of different gaps that we're seeing with the increased rigor of expectation of kindergarten students coming in and having a pretty solid baseline. That's what the standards are now based on. So the second goal is having all third graders read at grade level. And the goal is working toward students being proficient in reading and increasing the MCA score from 53.6% to 56% of third graders meeting or exceeding expectations on the MCA. Now, this is a proficiency score report. So this is based off the reading MCA, which is given one time. It's not an adapted test that students can retake or retry or understand. It's a test that specifically measures instruction towards the standards. So we also do other assessments that gauge students' reading abilities and their learning progress on the literacy continuum. So we'll do a benchmark assessment system. You may hear your students doing running records, the fast bridge. So this is one data piece on one day of students related to the standards of instruction set by MDE. So proficiency means that there's a baseline score that MDE sets that should be met at grade level. And then any student that meets that score is part of this number. So as you can see, we had 50% of our third-grade students at grade level within the MCA benchmark. This is above state average. And this was a fairly strong score, given the COVID, because these third-grade students would have taken this test after having first grade interrupted and second grade interrupted. So that's where, looking at this data, we have to really keep in mind all of the pieces that may tell the story as to why that score is the way it is and not rush to make changes when we know there were learning gaps and challenges for kids within our delivery mode and the learning styles and what they received during the COVID pandemic. So I think what I'll do is I'll progress through these and then have you ask questions afterward in case they're linked. Is that okay, Chair Davis? Another goal is racial and economic achievement gaps closing. And this is something that we're working toward to increase from 74.9 in 2019 to 77% of all students making medium or high growth as measured by MCAs. This goal is now obsolete because MDE did not provide us the MMR results. When we switched from No Child Left Behind to ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, MDE initiated growth measurements. They're called multiple measurements ratings because they recognized one score on one day does not tell the story of our learners. No one wants to be identified by one score on one day in one assessment delivery model. And so they started an MMR that gave us not just the proficiency score, but gave us the growth score of students. Because when we look at the learning for kids, we're focused on grade level. But also, just as important, if not more, is are they progressing at their own high rate of learning at their ability level? And so this is no longer being reported. So that's why you see this difference in reporting this year. So what our results were in just looking at math and reading between achievement gap groups is just the flat proficiency rate of 65.9% and 64.7%. This also is one of those saturated data points because typically, we would not set specific goals based on those numbers because we're combining grades three through 12. Right? And that's where this is not painting a true picture of diving down into what are our third-grade students doing? What are our fourth grade, fifth grade? And then we only have math in certain grade levels. So it is different. So we will be constructing a new goal with the Curriculum Advisory Committee this year and studying those benchmarks. Students being ready for career in college. We wanted to increase from 93.2% to 95% of high school seniors who indicate a high level of confidence in their college and career readiness as measured by the student survey that they take. Our result was that 88.2% of seniors had a high level of confidence. In 2021, it's 80%. And when we set these goals, school improvement teams and building leadership teams look at these and have conversations. Why did this drop? Instead of making assumptions, they go to the students. Right? What are you feeling? Tell us more about this. COVID shook our students, particularly our seniors who graduated during that COVID end-of-the-year gap and then had the learning gap with being in school, being out of school, really shook our students' ability to feel like they had a typical experience to be ready for college. So we're anticipating that that score will increase. However, we're still dealing with what we know to be some effects of the continuing pandemic. But they have follow-up conversations with students and seniors to ask more questions, to see what could have helped, what would we want to do differently to make sure that you are leaving feeling really prepared and confident to move forward in life. Students graduating from high school. Obviously, we always want 100% of our students graduating. And our goal for students graduating is focusing on the four-year graduation rate from 94.5%. Our graduation rate in 2021 was 95.6. There's a one-year lag time in reporting because you have... Any senior class has through the summer to continue having the opportunity to graduate. You also have up through a seventh year of high school or age 21 to work towards standards in some cases. And so we're focusing on the four-year period. This looks a little bit different from previous reports because this is focusing on Hastings High School only. Sometimes our numbers have focused on the Hastings Public School District, which includes students who aren't in our building, receiving our education. And we no longer wanted to report that because we don't have any control within that. If they're at a different institution, being served for different purposes, they're not receiving our supports. We still track that. But we're going to start reporting to you and the public, the students that we work with on a daily basis because that's what we know we can influence and focus. Part of the World's Best Workforce is also achievement and integration goals. And so achievement integration is a division within MDE that focuses specifically on disparities and how that impacts students in multiple subgroups. And so we set goals through the Achievement Integration Plan and receive dollars And so we set goals through the Achievement and Integration Plan and receive dollars that target specific strategies for that. So the goals with Achievement and Integration are to increase racial and economic integration, reduce achievement disparities, increase access to effective and diverse teachers. So the first goal that has been set was to increase the number of students of color and American Indian students who enroll in Advanced Placement AP or CIS, College and Schools Courses, from 18 in 2018-19 to at least 24 in 2021-22. When you set goals for the World's Best Workforce, you try to do multi-year goals. And you have to start with a baseline to establish what is an ideal goal that pushes growth, but is also reflective of the current status. So that's why we've exceeded this goal tremendously. This will be another one that gets adjusted, because we've met this goal. We will still keep monitoring it, but the efforts that the staff have taken to make sure students of color and American Indian students are trusting and knowing that they will be successful in AP and CIS is strong. So 71 students of color and American Indian students enrolled in AP or CIS courses for the 21-22 school year. 2020, 2021 was 35. So we're really excited to see that. And all of the students who enroll in the AP and the CIS courses are incredibly successful when we look at that data specifically. Goal two is that the number of high school teachers who have been formally trained in culturally relevant teaching strategies will move from two in 2018-19 to at least 30 in 2021-22. Again, this is one that was a baseline goal, that was multi-year, that we're going to update and improve upon. Now, once staff have a groundwork of culturally relevant teaching strategies, we can look at making it more sophisticated as to what are those strategies and how are they being implemented for students? And how do we know that engagement is increasing? But we are really excited that we've had 41 teachers trained, particularly when we had to take a year off of COVID. That first COVID summer, we weren't allowed to do any professional development, or that number would have been much higher. Last summer, previously to that, was a little bit lower. So the professional development is really important to look at engagement strategies. And people often get confused when they hear culturally relevant teaching. All of us carry our own culture, right? We carry our own communication style. We carry our own view frame of the world. And so when teaching, we want to make sure that we are not just viewing students who participate in our vocal as the active engaged students, but looking at engagement through a lens of that silent leader is participating and has elements to add. So how do we involve them in a way that maybe works with their comfort level, rather than being that student who's always really comfortable participating and wants to talk all the time, right? That's a big area of focus, is if we're just asking vocal questions to classrooms and having kids volunteer to participate, you're focusing on the same group of kids all the time, right? Who are comfortable with that. How do we expand that so all students have the ability to become more confident and contribute to class? A lot of times, with students who are not as much large group, social students, it's the small group participation, right? Put them in a smaller group, and then they'll shine and engage in a different way. So it's looking mostly at engagement strategies. Third goal, on a Likert scale survey, students report their understanding of diversity and intentionally making decisions to be inclusive of a baseline of an average of four by the end of the 2020 school year. We will also be adjusting this goal with the committee this year, but our students reported an average score of 4.5. Last year was 4.7. This does include partnerships with other district collaborations. So we collaborate with South St. Paul, Inver Grove Heights, Stillwater Public Schools, and students get to gain skills with other students and grow in their own self-awareness and cultural awareness. We'll still keep those practices, but we're going to change the focus of the goal. And the fourth goal is to increase the four-year graduation rates of students of poverty by 3% each year. If you look at our graduation rate, 85.2 with 6.6 continuing is actually reflective of the students within the poverty rates of 6.6 continuing on after initially that senior year not graduating on time with their class. It doesn't mean they won't graduate. They might just graduate at a different pace with a different assistance for GRE or other credit recovery type options that we offer. In 1819, it was 89.5; in 1920, it was 89.2. We will see what the committee of parents and staff and students see and feel about this goal. It is an important goal, because our free and reduced, free and/or reduced lunch populations are some of our largest student subgroups. But to protect that classified data, we can't identify the students. So it makes trying to reach those goals challenging, because we are not going to assume anything, right? But we don't know who the students are that we're trying to target, so it has to be a universal approach to reaching that goal, because we do not identify any of those students. But it is a subgroup that we need to pay attention to, because no matter what our economic background or reality is, we have just as much potential and passion and possibility as anybody in any other economic situation. So how do we help students in that situation? So we are going to add another meeting, and we'll add more if we need it, because we are in the year of resetting a lot of these goals now that we're through a lot of the pandemic. It'll be a fun part for the committee to weigh in and say, have we thought about this? We're curious about that. And the two future meetings that are on the calendar are February and April. So with that, that is a 10,000-foot view. I know Superintendent Adowell has given the State of the District report. That includes the district's vision card, and so that has a lot more data than what you see in something like this, because it can get specifically to building and specific assessments. But this is the larger MDE strategic plan report of how we're doing.
Director Maum, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Larson, for that robust presentation. Really appreciate it. I have two questions. The first one is just a clarifying question, because I really don't know. When it comes to the MCAs, for students that opt out of the MCAs, is that counted into the score in some capacity? How?
Yeah. We do get marked for students who opt out. And so our MCA scores do, I do not have the numbers in front of me, but I'm happy to provide them to the board. If we look at just the 2021 school year, which was very disrupted to COVID, we had 456 students in grades 3-12 who opted out and did not take the test. So that negatively impacts our scoring. Yep. It's a, they want all students to take that exam, but they also give families the right to opt out. So yes, that does impact us.
Thank you for that. Really appreciate you clarifying that. So I know one of the first slides, it said that the board's role is to adopt a long-term, comprehensive strategic plan to support and improve teaching and learning, and then to hold this annual public meeting to report progress. But I'm just thinking, and I don't obviously need an answer right now, because I think it's a very broad question, is, you know, what are the biggest concerns that our district has in making that effort to improve? But furthermore, how can we, as a school board, help support those efforts? And then also extending that to the community, because all of us have our circles of community members. We, you know, when we say constituents, it is the entire community. That's who we represent. So I think, you know, it is a collaborative effort between the district and the school board and the community. So I'm just thinking about what are ways that, you know, we, as a school board, can help impact and support the district in achieving and doing better?
Thank you for that question. As a learning organization, my first response is support and prioritize professional learning. And that includes professional collaboration for staff members and time to think about their practice and apply skills for their practice. We have four professional development days embedded within the school year, but right before and right after those days, they go right back to sometimes 150 students the next day, if they're in the middle school or the high school, or a classroom of 25 waiting for them all day. They don't have adequate time to truly improve. They do it all a lot on their own personal time digging into things. And so valuing that through a calendar, through practices, providing us with flexibility when we ask for certain times to have staff collaboration, even just the rate or connect days at the high school. Being open to that consideration, that gives teachers a chance to get to know students better, right? It improves situations for the teachers. It improves situations for the students. So that would be the first piece, is that our teachers want to keep growing. They just want the proper time to be able to do it. And so that would be the, one of the biggest levels of support for that. And I think the other piece is making sure that we have a variety of voices at the table when it comes to our experiences. We want to make sure that we are thinking of people who we might not talk to all the time or might not hear from a lot, right? Doesn't mean they're not any less interested in their students' experience, or the students are any less engaged, but who are all the people we get to serve and support in their development through life? And how do we incorporate that and their voice into this process? So those are my first two initial thoughts, but I can keep thinking, because there's more, I know. Besides the obvious financial investment, so, for the professional learning.
Other questions? Director Tate?
Yeah, I'm curious, on the, on the one that is, all the children are ready for school, as you said, we don't have a whole lot of control over that as a district. Are we actively measuring where kids are coming out of kindergarten, then, to see really what the progress was during the year and how we're doing year to year with that regard?
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. So this is the baseline for the, for teachers to understand where the students are at, so they can start right away adjusting to their level. And then we have multiple assessments throughout the school year that teachers do, the benchmark assessment system, which is reading with the students to gauge where they're at and growing with their reading level, as well as other just formative checks during the day, guided reading instruction, small group instruction. So every day, teachers are assessing and looking at that growth of the literacy continuum of skills. And then we do look at that at the end of the year, too. So we look at the formative throughout the year. We have fast bridge assessment along with a BASS. We have something called the HCAP, which is the Hastings Kindergarten Assessment. It's something that we use. And so then we look at that as school improvement teams at the end of the school year, and then that helps the building set goals for the next school year of things that they want to accomplish. So this is the big picture goal, but there are more smaller, more specific, smart, measurable goals that come through it.
And then I do, I took a bunch of notes here. Sorry.
It's okay. I'm going to give you one second, Director Tate, because I actually have a question on the heels of that, that allowed Director Tate to find her next note. You mentioned that there are kids that have not had previous early childhood learning in kindergarten, some have, some haven't. Do you guys ever take those numbers and parse them out to see where the performance is based on one cohort versus the other? Or is it just all one combined thing? Or do you actually have numbers of, oh, these kids, here's where their performance is based on having spent time in ECLC? Here are these kids, you know, that type of thing, to have a comparative there?
That's an excellent question. Having this be my second year in the district, I can't speak to past practice, because COVID interrupted it. I'd assume that that is part of the conversation, because it typically is part of the practice. And then you have early childhood staff who reach out to various centers to just share, here's what we're doing, here's what we focus on. So there is collabor, and people want to collaborate. And so yes, that is something that typically is done. I can't speak specifically to what Hastings has done, because this year is just the first year we get to get back into that collaborative plating with agencies.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right, Director Tate?
Yeah, I have a question on the first goal of the Achievement and Integration. It has a goal of, you know, at least 24 kids of color or American Indian students. And I guess I'm curious, since we are yearly, every year we're becoming more and more diverse, why is this set at a specific number instead of a percentage as a target? Because I would think that that would probably be more relevant. So that's part one. And then the second part is, because the goal is centered around enrollment, and I know that you had stated that we have very high success rates in these kids. However, I'm wondering if, if a better, a better way to look at it would be completion, because I think, right, if the kids don't finish these courses, they don't actually get the credit, the college credit or whatnot. So I guess I'm kind of challenging the nature of the goal a little bit, as far as what the logic is with the enrollment piece and the specific number instead of percentage.
Yeah. I didn't write the goal, so I don't know what the discussion was of the committee prior to this. This is one of those multi-year goals. It is something we will be talking about. Why not a percentage? And so I think it'll be interesting to see what the committee wants and sees with that. As it relates to the students completing the course, we know that they all are successful. It's a matter of maybe looking at the varying levels of success. So we can report that out, too, but we do have 100% pass rate within the AP and CIS experience for students, unless there's some type of tragedy or unique circumstance. So, so that is an assumption when we report that, that those are all passing.
And then I did have another, another one. Just wondering if the graduation rate for, I guess it would be for two years ago, if there's any thought around, because when you look at the confidence rate of the seniors, it was at 80%, but yet we had a very high graduation rate. I'm just curious if there's any thought around the fact that I heard from, at least from students and parents, that it was kind of impossible to fail during COVID. And I get it. And I'm just wondering if maybe that was an artificially high graduation rate, or maybe it was an anomaly that we shouldn't necessarily expect to repeat in the near future? I mean, I know that our graduation rate was close, but just wondering your thoughts on that.
That's an interesting correlation and question. I don't know if graduation or assessments were less than. I think they were different. Because of the COVID pandemic and students just having spring break and then just not coming back into the buildings and having to figure out, how do we learn and teach and graduate and finish out our courses? How do we do summit of, end of the year? So I think it was different. I do know that we had more flexibility to make sure that all students passed successfully, right? There was a push that you are not going to fail students because of this pandemic, so put whatever needs you have in place. Last year, there was, I would say, different changes in pacing for delivery for students of what the normal course content pacing would be because of some of the legs within the pandemic. But I think that's a question that I can pose to the committee and staff and have that conversation, because that is an interesting question to consider.
Director Maum?
I would just add to that, that there, the last two years has been a significant push. You remember the last presentation I gave around the state of the district? We had over 600 credit recovery credits earned. That's been a real focus of the high school, and that's going to play into your graduation rates. If you can get those kids that may have actually not passed a class and get them retooled into recovering that credit, that's, that's one way to keep your graduation rate high.
Are there any questions from the side of the table for Ms. Larson? Becky? No? Director Seuss, any questions? Just want to make sure everybody's covered. Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ms. Larson. Next up on our agenda is the OPEB presentation.
All right, we're going to turn that over to Ms. Subert to walk through the OPEB items.
Ms. Subert?
Thank you. Okay, so later on in the agenda, you'll see that there's an action item to approve the contributions that are being shown right now on the screen. Again, this is for OPEB, so other post-employment benefits. And the district has committed to future liabilities for retiree health, pension, and accumulated sick leave through multiple bargaining group agreements. All of the subsidized commitments have been closed to future entrance, except for the principals and administrators contract. So with that, with those benefits being closed, we'll continue to expect to see a decrease in this liability. And then GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, requires districts to do this liability study every two years. to do this liability study every two years to determine the liability and the disclosure requirements for our audit. And then how we choose to fund these liabilities is up to the school board. So you can see, we've been doing this since about 2010 and it's every two years. And it's something that we contract with Hildy Incorporated. They actually do the study based on the information that the district provides. So it's all based on, it's called an actuarial determined contribution or an ADC. And those are based on the service cost, the interest cost and an amortization base. And you'll be able to see on here that the district has continued to try to reduce that amortization base. So for 2223, in the first category, which is health and pension, that amortization base is going to 12 years. In the last study, we were at 14 and prior to that, 16 and 18. So we just continue to try to reduce that amortization base, which then is really paying down that unfunded liability that the district has. And then there's multiple components to this. There's three different GASB standards that have to be incorporated. So it's GASB 75, which has all the health insurance payments. GASB 73, which is the pension. And then GASB 16, which is all the other compensated absences. The biggest changes that we saw in the study for this year were the, the changes related to the retiree health and what it was based on. So we have different levels of insurance. There was a triple gold and a comp basic. And it used to be that the retirees' benefit was based on the premium of triple gold. And in almost all of our groups now, that has been changed to comp basic. So that lowers the district's liability for that. And then the other change that impacted the study was just a reduction in the number of participant counts. And that was due to new language in the teacher's contract. That basically said, you know, teachers hired on or after July 1 of '22 are not eligible for retiree insurance. Instead, they're getting a healthcare savings plan on a yearly basis that's being funded So you'll, later on tonight, we'll be asking for this to be approved. The top section of this sheet is the health and pension. That's going to go to the healthcare savings plan. So in the last study, overall, we were funding about $1.1 million. And with this new study, it's going to about $700,000, so a reduction of about $400,000 between all three funds. And then the second component of it is the accumulated sick leave and pension that goes to a committed or restricted account. And that also has a reduction. That one's much smaller, but about 16 or 17,000 roughly. So I can take any questions. Otherwise, there are, all the detailed reports are in board book from Hildy Incorporated. But as a summary, I'm hoping that helps.
Thank you, Ms. Subert. Any questions for Ms. Subert? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Ms. Subert. We're moving on to truth and taxation.
That again is going to be Ms. Subert giving you a presentation on where we're at with truth and taxation.
Okay, so I typically start with just a, a quick summary of the revised budget. So also as an action item tonight will be approval of the revised budget. And for this portion of it, I'll really just focus on the changes from the adopted budget. But then when I do move on to the truth and taxation, you'll see that it includes a lot of the same information or a lot of additional information from this revised budget. Okay, so the changes from the adopted, as far as the revenues go, the first thing is we always recalc our pupil units based on the October 1 seat count. So the adopted had adjusted pupil units of 4,495 and the revised is going to 4,482. So a reduction of about 12.8. And then that compared to our prior year is a reduction of about 73, which we had planned for. So the overall reduction in revenue is $69,000. Other miscellaneous revenue, there's an increase of $19,000. The accumulated sick leave and pension to the committed, that's the one that we were just talking about. So that's a reduction in the required contribution. So it actually increases our revenues in Fund One by that 11,000. And then federal programs, you'll see it's included in both the revenues and the expenditures. They just offset, but there was an increase in the revenues that we're using from all those COVID funds of 178,000 approximately. State special ed aid is increasing by approximately 507,000. And state special ed aid is difficult at times to determine. But based on our audit for last year and now that we're kind of back to more normal operations after COVID, it was determined there should be an increase in that. And then the other change was the committed for technology. The board had rescinded that contribution because we're continuing to use bond funds to, to pay for some of that necessary technology. So the overall revenue increase was about $946,000. When we look at the revised budget for expenditures, you'll see the direct offset for those federal programs. So the revenue increased, but at the same time, the expenditures also increased by that 178,000. Our transportation costs are increasing in special ed. And then the transportation for students with special accommodations. And then also the fuel clause that we increased. So that's overall 100, or I'm sorry, 513,000. Utilities have been increased by 100,000. Miscellaneous finance budgets, just district-wide overall were 34,000 increase. And then that liability study related to the OPEB payment to the trust, that's a reduction in the contribution that's required for Fund One of approximately 401,000. And then as part of our audit for fiscal year '21, '22, we had to book an entry for subsequent year's expenditures. So in June of each year, the board approves that adopted budget. And because that adopted budget was over budget, we had to reserve for that in the prior year. So that impacts this budget. And then our payroll benefit annual calc was redone. There was a, an overall decrease of 133,000 approximately. And it, that calc included a 2.53 FTE increase, but all eligible salaries were coded to the federal COVID grants. And then the new hires were updated from estimates to actuals. And then all the settled groups are actuals, but all the other groups are still estimates. So overall, our expenditures decreased by about 714,000. And our total change from the adopted then is 1.6 million. This next slide will just kind of show a quick summary so you can see where our beginning fund balances are and our ending and what that net change is. So this is one of the areas where you can see that, that assigned had that million dollars in it. We're basically using that to offset this year's budget. So the ending fund balance for the assigned is zero, but our unassigned then that is incorporated in there. So that's how that net change of 655,000 is coming into play. So I'll move on to the truth and taxation unless there's any questions and the budget will be kind of continued in that presentation. All right, so our public hearing for taxes, the taxes that are payable in 2023. Minnesota state law requires that we hold a public meeting. It has to be between November 25th and December 28th, has to be at 6:00 PM or later. It can be part of a regularly scheduled meeting. We will allow for public comment and then the board can adopt the final levy at the same meeting. In the presentation, it's required that we talk about our current year budget as well as the proposed property tax levy. So for tonight, our agenda is we'll do a little background information on school funding. We'll talk about the district's budget. We'll talk about the district's proposed tax levy for the taxes payable in 2023. And then we'll allow for public comment. State legislator or Minnesota legislation is, must set the funding for public schools. So legislature, legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise. As a result, the funding is highly regulated. So the state sets the formulas which determine the revenue and then most of those are based on a per pupil basis. The tax policy is set and then the maximum authorized property tax levy is also set. The state authorizes school boards to submit referendums for operating in capital needs to voters for approval. The basic gen ed formula has been lagging inflation. So since 2002, 2003, the state gen ed formula has not kept pace with inflation. For fiscal year '21, '22, there was an increase of 2.45% or $161 per pupil over the previous year. And then for fiscal year '22, '23, there was a 2% added to the formula or $135 over the previous year. So that per pupil allowance for fiscal year '22, '23 of $6,863 would need to increase by another $1,263 or 18.4% to have kept pace with inflation, which would get us to an allowance of 8,126. So this next slide, I think you guys have seen this in a variety of places, but it just shows that funding gap. And for us right now, that funding gap equates to about $5.6 million annually. Another major component for school districts is the underfunding of special ed. So according to Minnesota Department of Ed, fiscal year 2020, costs were underfunded by about $591 million statewide. And then by fiscal year 2025, it's projected that they'll be underfunded by about $806 million again statewide. The primary options to bridge this funding gap are to cut from regular program budgets or to increase referendum revenue, which most, most districts have done both. And the cost of underfunding special ed for Hastings is over $3 million annually. Just kind of keep in mind, the change in the tax levy does not always directly correlate to the change in the budget. So the tax levy is based on many state determined formulas plus voter-approved referendums. Some increases in tax levies are revenue neutral, which are offset by reductions in state aid. And then the expenditure budget is limited by states that set revenue formulas, voter-approved levies and fund balance. So an increase in school taxes does not always correlate to an equal increase in our budget. And then differences in levy cycles. So school districts and cities or counties have different levy cycles. For school districts, our budget year begins July 1st. So the 2023 taxes will provide revenue for our '23, '24 fiscal year. And that budget is adopted in June of 2023. Whereas for cities and counties, their budget year begins January 1st and the 2023 taxes provide revenue for their 2023 calendar year budget. As far as the budget information that we're required to provide, because approval of school district budgets lag the certification of the tax levy by about six months, we're only required to provide current year budget information. And then our fiscal year '23, '24 budget will be adopted by the school board in June of '23. And we'll go through and kind of look at these different funds, but school district budgets are divided into these separate funds based on purposes of revenue. And that's as required by law. So this is our district revenue and expenditures report and it will show by fund. And you'll be able to see like our revenues for our '22, '23 budget for all of these funds is about $70.4 million and our expenditures are about $80.6 million. The, there are, the internal service fund you can see is kind of blacked out or grayed out, though it's not included in this report. And that's our self-funded health and dental report. The other thing to kind of note on here, the difference between the revenues and expenditures, the majority of that ties back to our building construction fund. As we're, we've had that revenue and we just continue to spend it and we're anticipating spending it down in this '22, '23 year. So then if we look at our revenue for all funds, you'll be able to see that our general fund accounts for about 84% of all of our revenues. Food service is roughly 3.9%, community service 3.1%. Our building construction at this point is 0.1%. Debt service 7.4%. And our OPEB trust equates for about 1% of our overall revenue. And if we look at that a little bit more detailed, just where is that money coming from? So this is just the general fund. About 69% of it is coming from the state, 6.4% from federal, 0.4% from other sources and then 24.3% from local sources. We can look at the budget again by object. Again, this is just the general fund, but salaries and benefits and purchase services are the largest expenditures for the district. Oftentimes, purchase services are equivalent to like salaries and benefits. It's just that we're, we're contracting for those services and then instead of hiring them as our employees. So those three buckets equate for about 91% of our overall expenditures. We can look at it even further by program. And at this one, you know, I usually just kind of look at the ones that are directly impacting the classroom. So our regular instruction, our pupil support services, instructional support services, special ed instruction, invocational ed instruction, all of those come to approximately 81%. So about 81% of all of our expenditures are directly tied back to supporting in the And then if we look at our payable '23 property tax levy, we'll talk a little bit about how the determination of the levy is done. We'll do some comparisons with it. I'll talk through the changes, the reasons for the changes and then the impacts on the taxpayers. So property tax background, every owner of taxable property pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions, county, city, township, school districts in which the property is located. And then each taxing jurisdiction sets their own tax levy, often based on the limits in state law, though. And then the county sends out the bills, collects the taxes from property owners and distributes the funds back to the other taxing jurisdictions. This next slide is just a sample of the specific notice that each taxpayer receives. So they'll get these between November 11th and November 24th. It will show a comparison to the previous year by taxing jurisdiction. And then for school districts, it'll break it down by voter-approved and other amount. And then it includes the time and place of the public meeting. So for school district property taxes, each school district may levy taxes in over 40 different categories. The maximum levy amount is calculated by MDE for each category. And they again either have to be set in state law or they're voter-approved. And then for the property tax process, they're, I'll kind of outline the key steps. But it's important to note that the district really has control over only one of those six steps. So here's the overall property tax process. And step one starts with the city or the county or assessor determining estimated market value of each parcel of property. Step two is the legislature sets the formula for the tax capacity and the school district levy limits. Step three is with the county auditor calculating the tax capacity for each parcel as well as the total tax capacity for the school district. Step four is Minnesota Department of Ed calculates the detailed levy limits for each school district based on the formulas approved. And then step five is where this school board adopts a proposed levy in September. And then after the public hearing, which we're doing tonight, the board will adopt a final levy in December. And the final can never be more than the proposed except for voter-approved amounts. And then step six is that the county auditor divides the final levy by the district's total tax capacity to determine the tax rate needed to raise the levy amount. The approval of the tax levy, so it goes back a little ways, but September 8th The approval of the tax levy, so it goes back a little ways, but September eighth, M D E prepared and distributed the first draft of the levy limit. September twenty eighth, the school board approved the proposed levy amount. In mid-December, the county mailed out the property tax statements. And then December seventh, tonight is the public hearing. And then following the hearing, the school board will vote to certify the final levy amounts. And then if we look at an overview of the proposed tax levy, so the payable twenty three tax levy is an increase from two thousand and twenty two of approximately one point six million dollars or nine percent. And then the changes by levy category and reason, I'll kind of detail those in these next slides. So this is just a comparison. So you can see the two thousand twenty two compared to the payable two thousand twenty three and that overall nine percent increase down at the bottom. And the explanation of the changes. So for the general fund, the voter approved operating referendum, there was an increase of about seven hundred and eighty five thousand. We use these funds for general operating expenses. And the reason for the change is the voter approved operating referendum authority included an annual inflationary increase. And those inflation factors are determined by the state as set in statute. So this is one of those things that had been approved many years ago. The state actually calculates that inflation factor, but it did provide additional revenue for the district. The second one, again, for the general fund, this is the other post-employment benefits, an increase of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is used for OPEBs, so those other post-employment benefits. And the reason for the change is that the district is eligible to levy for this. And again, this is the unfunded, so the amount that we are not funding through those other accounts that we already talked about. And this will vary year to year based on the number of employees that are retiring. And then the next one is still, we're talking for the general fund. It's a prior year adjustment and equates to about five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And this is that same thing with that inflationary factor. So the initial levies are based on estimates and then in later years, amounts are updated and the levies are retroactively adjusted. So this, again, is just that inflationary adjustment. Factors that can impact taxpayers' school taxes. So many factors can cause a tax bill for an individual property to increase or decrease from year to year. And that's most likely changes in the value of the individual property, changes in the total value of all property within the district, and then increases or decreases in levy amounts caused by changes in the state funding formula, local needs and costs, voter approved referendums, and other factors. So this slide is just kind of meant to show how each property owner pays a portion of the pie. So the overall district levy, if an individual is experiencing a higher market value increase, they'll pay a bigger, kind of a bigger slice of this. Then somebody with a lower market value increase, they'll have a smaller slice of it to pay. And then just the impact of the property valuations. So we just kind of make a simple example to help illustrate that. But if there's two properties in the district and we'll say that both houses are valued at a hundred thousand, the total levy is five hundred dollars, each property will pay two hundred and fifty dollars of that levy. So there's an equal share there. If you look at this next one, if we say the, the orange house is increasing by ten percent and the blue house is increasing by twenty five percent, you can see then that that blue house pays a bigger share of that same five hundred dollars that the district gets. And then we look at a four-year school levy comparison. So I'll go through a few examples, but the examples exclude, include the school district taxes only. And they're shown based on a no change to the property valuation in a twenty five point four percent increase in property value for residential homes over the past four years. So that twenty five point four is the average in, for property in the city of Hastings. And then the amounts are preliminary estimates. The final amounts could change slightly, and this is something that elders, the district's municipal financial advisor, has provided the district. So this first one is just kind of a table. And I'll maybe just skip through this one because I've got some graphs that will make it easier to see. But if we look at estimated changes in school property taxes based on no change in property value, you can see the example one is a two hundred thousand dollar residential homestead property. Over the four years, it's actually decreasing if there was no change in property value. And that same is true for a four hundred thousand dollar residential homestead property. The taxes payable are decreasing without the change in the property value. And then this slide kind of shows the same thing, but it's a five hundred thousand dollar commercial and a seventy five hundred dollar agricultural homestead property. If we then kind of put into play with it, the, the cumulative change of that twenty five point four percent change in the property value, you can see that the total tax is increasing, but it's still not increasing at the same rate as the change in the property value. So, and this first example is on a two hundred thousand dollar residential homestead property. The total tax increase is about ten point four percent, while the property increase is about twenty five point four. And then example two is just a four hundred thousand dollar home. And that one again to the total tax increase is about eight point seven percent, while the value is about twenty five point four percent. So this last slide or second to last slide is about property tax refunds and deferrals. So there's a couple of options out there for people if they're looking to get credits back. So the first one is the homestead credit refund. So it's available to all homestead property owners, both residential and agricultural. There is a refund sliding scale based on the total property taxes and income. So the maximum refund is about twenty nine hundred dollars for homeowners and about twenty three hundred dollars for renters. And then there's a special property tax refund. Again, this one's available for homestead property owners, both residential and agricultural, with a gross tax increase of at least twelve percent and a hundred dollars over prior years. And then that refund is sixty percent of the tax increase that exceeds the greater of that twelve percent or a hundred dollars. The maximum on this one is a thousand dollars. And then the last one is the senior citizen property tax deferral program. So this allows people sixty five years of age or older with household incomes of sixty thousand dollars or less to defer a portion of their property taxes on their home. And then that deferred property tax plus accrued interest must be paid when the home is sold or the homeowner dies. So those are some options that are available. Our next steps for tonight, so the board will accept public comment on this proposed levy. And then later on, there's an action item where we'll be asking the board to certify the two thousand and twenty three property tax levy.
That was a lot.
It's a lot.
So thank you, Ms. Super, for doing, thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. So, so you guys kind of got the layout of it. So at this time, we'll take any public comment having to do with truth and taxation components that some of my one share might impact you, something like that. All ready then? Or good, there is one, or was, oh, yes, please come on, please come up to the mic.
Blige's presentation, it was very informative. And I came prepared. So, so after the presentation, actually, I am very informed about the taxation for the school. And let me go ahead, begin by saying good evening to the chairperson and also the distinguished members of the school board and also the ladies and gentlemen, the public. My name is Peter Mack. I do have a PhD. And I'm retired. And my address here is on St. Piper Circle here in Hastings. And I've, I've lived here in Hastings for almost twenty years, so I'm not a newcomer. But since I'm retired, now I got a lot of free time. So that's why I want to get involved in, not necessarily physically involved, but at least know about, you know, how the government or the school board is spending the taxpayers' money. So thank you very much for this opportunity for me to, to comment and ask some questions. Of course, some of those questions been answered from the slides that I saw earlier from the lady over there. But still, like I said, I'm prepared, so I'm going to go ahead and go through some of my notes here. First of all, I want to say that I want to assure you that I'm a hundred and ten percent supporter of the school system, the teachers and the different programs. My own children gone through the public school system and they have gone on to do very well for themselves. And like I said, in fact, myself is a outcome or end product of a good education system. I have actually have five different academic degrees and one of them is a PhD. And I did serve in education circle, so. But don't ask me what university I was teaching at, okay? So this is between me and myself. Why something will come back and haunt me. I said, Peter Mack, you were at that meeting. Okay, anyway. So, so after looking at the presentation or different presentation tonight, I'm very impressed with the ongoing progress and the program that you guys are making, like in special ed and hiring teachers and so on. However, the numbers doesn't quite jive with what I have. I remember seeing a slide saying about a nine percent increase. Am I correct? There was a nine percent increase. But, so my concern here is there is seems to be a year after year ongoing by budget increase. I guess that's the norm. I mean, it's happening everywhere. And even in the midst of the news that we just heard yesterday, right on the TV news, that the state government, the state is actually projecting a seventeen billions of surplus. Of course, you're gonna say, well, that has nothing to do with the local government or the local district, but it does. Well, you folks are in that circle, in that loop. I'm not, I'm retired. And here's the kicker. As I look at my own proposed, remember that slide? My own proposed one, there are three items on there, and the last one of those three, the school district proposed budget for two thousand twenty three. And mine happened to be seventeen percent, and I repeat seventeen percent. It's not a big number money-wise, but the percentage is somewhat shocking, like seventeen percent. So, so my question is, to you, the members of the board or whoever are responsible for our, for our budget, is why is this increase so crazily big? Seventeen percent and it's almost unreasonable. Well, if I look at the nine percent, that's probably reasonable, but not seventeen percent. Now, as a retiree myself, I, I am, you know, everybody knows retirees have very limited income, right? Even my little, little, little social security paycheck is being taxed, taxed, right, by the state. And I know we have heard about the, the state trying to do away with their social security tax. But I guess what I, my comment is, you just don't, or should not, or try not to squeeze blood out of somebody who has no more to give. I don't have any more to give. My 401K is down there in the bottom of the link. It's not getting any better anytime soon. So, so my next question to, to you folks is, is there something you can do about this increase? Probably not, you know, I've been to many, many meetings, a budget meeting. I myself was at one time managing, you know, a department budget for several million dollars. And it comes to the end, you just have to deal with the numbers, so, but still. I mean, I'm hoping there are more people here to voice their opinion or to voice their comments about the increase, but maybe there are more, but people to come up and say something, but so far it's just me now. So my next question is, I only have two questions. So the first one was, how, how come I have that big increase of seventeen, seventeen percent? I talked to the assessor and he said, well, you passed, you missed the window to, to appeal your, your assessed value. I said, oh, that's, that's cool, that's good, you know, I missed the window, so it's a better, oh, good luck next year, you know? So that's not nice. So my second question here is, may I invite or encourage the school board members, the chairperson, the superintendent, those of you that are in the circle, that are in charge of this, to exert your, to exert your, your budgeting power or wisdom to the lawmakers, to the people, and even Saint Paul, when they have, you know, seventeen billions, seventeen billion dollars that they arguing about how to spend, what to do with that? You know, so, I mean, he said, well, okay, it's a state money. Yeah, I know, it's a state money, but where does that state money come from? The citizen, the resident or the state? I am one of them, you are one of them. We are all of this Minnesotan that has been paying this into this surplus, right? So, so is there a way for, for the school board to, to say, we say, well, this is what we heard from public meetings and we want to reflect that to the, to the state capital or to the legislatures or to the lawmakers that, you know, when you guys go into your meeting in Saint Paul and talk about how to spend, how to refund or how to do with that big chunk of money, this is one of the concern, you know, education, of course, is supposed to be on the top of that agenda. I am all for education. I mean, I'm telling you, I, I'm not going to tell you what university I served at, but at one point, there was three or four years where we have didn't much wage increase than, you know, I almost quit. But no, we are there for the classroom, for the students, not for the money. Well, so my final comment is, if the school and the students and the teachers can benefit so much from this meaningful funding, I think the right thing for you, for us to do is to ask the people who control the money, right? The money is not from getting more money from the little guys like us, which I have nothing to give, nothing more to give. And we have already been paying into this gigantic, enormous money pot that, that we cannot really, right, have any control about. So I think that's it for me, and I want to thank you very much for letting me be here to, to blah, 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 say a few things. And also I thank you for your time and for your, for your patience. So, good night. Thank you.
Mr. Mack, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I can tell you that everybody here, we hear you and we understand where you're coming from. And we're all property owners here too.
Sure.
So we actually see it.
Just one, one guy that, out of everybody here that, that has to. Yeah, I, just one, one guy that, out of everybody here that, that has to, we have to pay the, the property tax, right, and that include.
Yes, sir. And, and this school board is able to, actually, we will have opportunity to speak to legislature next year as well.
Sure, I think that's what I'm hoping for, is to reflect to them, this is what we hear from, you know, from people out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mac. Anybody else want to try to follow Mr. Mac? Very well spoken, sir, very well done. Okay, with nothing else there, we're gonna go to the 917 update. I see 917 update.
All right, thank you. 917 met last night, so at this point, I didn't, did not have any minutes to contribute, but I did include a picture. So 917, one of the things that I'm constantly energized by at 917 is, is their commitment to living their mission and values. And so this is a new, they've been adding to their board wall artwork by students. And then when we came in yesterday, this is a new piece that's been added. So each of those framed statements, personalization, empathy, stewardship, innovation, those are their core values. And they're just, they're just prominently displayed and they're engaged on their agendas and they're engaged in every presentation that an administrator makes says, you know, I'm currently gonna speak to collaboration, I'm gonna give a presentation today on our personalization. It's just really well engaged and I think it's a, it's a model that we can aspire to. And so what I did want to do is just take time to share the mission and vision that fits with these core values. So the mission of district, Intermediate School District 917 is, in partnership with membership districts, Intermediate School District 917 provides high-quality, equitable and specialized programming to meet the needs of all students. And their vision is that Intermediate School District 917 models an innovation culture with diverse pathways, serving students and families through equitable practices with highly-trained staff. And I think it's good for us to, to recognize the commonality between 917's mission and vision and our own strategic mission and vision, as well as the personalized by, by district personalized values. So when I, I would anticipate that at the January meeting, I'll have minutes from both the December and the January 917 meeting attached. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Dean. That takes us to the Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee report looks shockingly like the Finance Committee minutes because that too was yesterday. And it, it got turned into a meeting minute, get into minutes format by including the date, time and attendees. The piece that, and it really was an opportunity for the Finance Committee to review the OPEP contribution background, the revised budget background materials, and what I would hope that everybody takes the time, everybody on the board takes the time to look at going forward, is levy next steps. They're provided here, they were provided to the Finance Committee as kind of a looking forward, project management calendar. And just, everybody on the board should be aware that, that we're just right at the beginning of that process, should we need to, in order to hit the November 23 election cycle. So just pencil those in, keep them in your mind. Thank you very much.
There you go. Next up is Policy Committee report.
Awesome. So we met on November 30th. First up was Policy 208. We, well, you'll see it obviously on the, the agenda for first read with the updated definitions and the July 2022 MSBA updates. The 200 series policies in general are going to be reviewed in 2023. So we did receive some comments in the last month regarding, I mean, quite a few of the different Policy 200 series policies. And so we'll be able to go dive a little bit deeper into those comments and take those into consideration. But for the purposes of this approval or this first read, it is updating the definitions and the July 2022 MSBA update, updates. Policy 506, so this is one of those mandatory annual review policies that is student discipline at this time because, so backstory to 506, about a year and a half, two years ago, probably two years ago, because it took about a year to develop, Policy 506 went through a complete overhaul. And so August of, what would it be, 2021, I want to say it was August of 2021, it was approved by the board for conception and then it went through, obviously, a year. So we've seen it in action for a year. It's, there have been no concerns brought to the board, specific concerns about this policy. So at this time, the recommendation is that we don't make any changes, we'll evaluate it annually. If there are specific concerns, we would just ask that the board bring it to the Policy Committee and, and address what specifically about the policy is not currently working, because that's, that's the question that we need to be asking. So this is also one of those related questions of, you know, we've been talking about policy versus procedure and splitting those two. We discussed at a work session that we're going to be bringing the Policy 200 series to the board, I'm hoping in spring of 2023, to sit down, you know, we're gonna, again, we'll decide this, well, we'll figure this out, the Policy Committee will figure out what policy or when we will be fitting in the Policy 200 series for review. Once that is outlined, sorry, I'm just realizing I'm using my hands a lot, which is really, really, it's annoying me. Anyway, we want to make sure that, you know, we are separating the policies from the procedures, but that will be a, a board discussion. But 506 is a prime example of how, how it actually benefits the board and the district to have the actual policy and the procedures separated, because we have the, that very lengthy matrix that goes with discipline. And, you know, as, as it goes into being utilized, sometimes we identify that the procedures aren't necessarily jiving with the intent. So this one is, Policy 506 is going to approval, so per Policy 208, we can go to approval right away because there are no recommended changes. I have noted too that there was a concern about maybe this isn't the best practice, but that is definitely something that as we review Policy 208 and the deep dive in 2023, that maybe we consider that or the Policy Committee can consider that. So the recommendation is for approval. Policy 802, administration will review our current policy and the MSBA policy and provide red line changes and recommendations to the Policy Committee on December 15th, which is our next meeting. We reviewed Policy 428, ethical behavior. So this policy is, it's unique to ISD 200 and it comes from the, the Uniform Grant Manual, but, okay, so the policy, it, it went for a legal opinion, or we, we have it with, with the legal right now, do we still need this particular policy or not? And if we do, it's probably not suited well in the 400 series because it's related to finance, so it probably, we would ask that it's renamed and that we put it into the 700 series. So we'll know more about that once the legal, legal gets back to us and then we'll bring a recommendation to the board. Policy 206, further conversation about this. So at our November work session, all of us sat down and, you know, the consensus was that we want public, the public portion to be at 6:00 PM and then start the business meeting at 6:15. Other than that, I didn't gather any other consensus on the items that we need clarification on. So we'll be coming back probably to get further clarification and, and figure out how we want to tackle 206 and what we want that to look like. Another idea you'll see on here is that we could potentially move the public comment to a work session instead of a business meeting and this benefits us multiple ways. So if no one were to sign up to, to speak, we could actually just jump into our work session and get, get our work done. And then what I particularly like, because I need time to digest, to make a thorough answer or decision, is that it gives us usually about two additional weeks to really consider what the public is saying and then for them to also provide additional feedback. Like if, I, I very often, like during listening sessions, I have, I want to ask more questions, okay, I need follow-up, I need clarification on what it specifically is that you were bringing to us. So I think that, that could be another option as well, just for consideration there. Policy 417, so this is on the agenda for second read tonight. The questions that were brought up during the first read, we discussed it as a committee and then we recommend moving this to an agenda item for approval for next month. So the questions is, you know, the questions posed last month were, who is this policy for? So it's 400 series for its employees. And then why don't we recommend adding visitors to this policy? Because it's applicable to employees and the enforcement of a policy on visitors could prove difficult. So for example, if a visitor attends a sporting event and grabs dinner with family beforehand, so just for clarification, Policy 417 is, oh my gosh, what is the title of it? Thank you. Yep. So it, if, if a visitor were to come to a sporting event, they grab dinner with family beforehand, during that dinner, they consume a beverage that has alcohol in it, can we prevent them from setting foot on our property? I think that would be a little difficult unless they're breaking the law. So and then for section 4C2, it reflects may and shall, and so the question was, why does it, why did we change it from shall to may? And that's because violators of the policy may not always be suspended, if that makes sense, like there may be some mitigating circumstances that have a different outcome. Last comment here, Policy 722, we reviewed that one. It is on tonight's agenda for second read. We would recommend that it is moved to an agenda item for approval next month. The, there was a question about section 7, 8 and B and asking if these were additions, like new ads, and, and yes, from the July 2022 MSBA update. So I hope that provides clarification. That is all I have.
Thank you, but don't go far.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, because now we're gonna talk specifically about policies in the first reading, so, there you go.
All right, Policy 208, which is our first read on this one. Again, this is based off, we, we updated definitions, so come, we want to get this one to the table to start our practice of adding in. So if you take a look at paragraph three, we have defined adopted, reviewed and revised. So at the, on our policies, you'll see those three with specific dates. So then you can reference 208 and say, okay, this is when it was adopted and what does that actually mean? In addition, there were the MSBA updates, so we would recommend that this go to a second read so that we can actually start this particular practice, knowing that in our 200 series review in 2023, this will, this particular policy will be reviewed again.
Any questions on 208? Director Tate.
Yeah, I have some concerns with this policy. First of all, it states, it references public comment and public input twice in here, which currently we don't, I mean, we have the listening sessions, but I don't know that I consider that public comment, you know, it sounds in here like it's meant to address the full board. So without having that public comment piece, and I know that that's coming, I just wonder if the, if the verbiage should be changed, but if it's, if it's, I guess it depends on when 206 is gonna come through, right? And if, if this is coming forward sooner, I believe we should define what we mean by public comment and public input, and that's in sections 5A and B. And then the other thing on here that I, I am very concerned about is that it states that a policy, if there's no recommendation from the Policy Committee for changes, then it should just kind of go right to an action item. And with the fact that policies only come up to be reviewed every one to three years, I don't feel like that is the board doing the due diligence to make sure that we're thoroughly evaluating this policy. And I'm gonna be honest, when I get an agenda with 400 pages and one of them is a policy that I haven't read recently, it's a challenge to feel like I am well-equipped and, and have had enough time to really, you know, percolate and think about that policy and what I would recommend for changes at that time when it's like cramming for finals time. The other thing that concerns me is that while we may not have recommendations for changes, I don't know that having it up and done in one meeting gives the public enough of an opportunity to provide input, should they feel that there should be changes, maybe that we didn't recognize. So for example, the, the discipline policy that's coming up later tonight is a perfect example. This is, this is a huge policy. I mean, all of our policies are important, but this, this one is really important. And I feel like really cramming it in to here tonight to ultimately hopefully, you know, get it done with is a disservice to, to the, the process that I feel we should be following with making sure that we're taking enough time to go through these when they do come up for review. The other question, I guess I had, this is more of a procedural question, but under 6A, implementation of policy, it states that, that the board shall be, it hits, previously it said that the board should approve employee and student handbooks. It should be, they shall be subject to annual review and approval by the school board. But if we aren't approving them, I'm guessing what, what is, or I'm asking, what is prompting a review of them? If they're available for approval, does that just mean that they're on the website for us to go read at any point? Or is there some, some sort of a process that would happen or that needs to happen to make sure that we are reviewing these as a board? Because without that approval piece of it, I just, I get concerned that that would get lost. Let me just make sure, I think that's, that's it. Those were my concerns.
Thank you, Director Tate. Does anybody else have anything to add? Director Zuzik.
On 6D, when it talks about the review schedule, MSBA also gives guidance on which policy should be reviewed annually, and there's an awful lot of them struck here. Is that their guidance? I, I'd be curious. It might be. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for clarification on that, so I believe that we went from 10 mandatory to two mandatory, one highly recommended.
Thank you.
And that was in July.
Thank you.
Anyway, anybody on this side of the table? No? Well, that's what first readings are for, so thank you. Okay, let's go on to second reading for 417.
So with Policy 417, we already, in my summary, talked about the increase from last month. The recommendation is to move this to an agenda item for approval for next month pending any concerns or requests to have us go back to the committee for further consideration.
417, Director Tate.
Yes, in, in section 2A, this was reworded. I remember we had this conversation last time. And the intent, I believe from your notes, said that it would prevent, for example, a teacher consuming alcohol and then coming to work. But the way that this has been reworded, I'm afraid that that has removed that. I'm afraid that that has removed that from it. Now it reads, use or possession of controlled substances, toxic substances, medical cannabis, and alcohol at school or in any other district location is prohibited. So it just says consuming and having possession of it at school is prohibited. And so it kind of eliminated the using beforehand. So I think that that goes against the intent of what your notes had stated. So I think that that should probably be reworded just a bit to make sure that that part is understood.
So like the word consumption, for example, I mean, is that what you're into meeting?
No. So so the part that's been struck, it says before, during, or after school hours. So it was the before that's been removed that I think should still be remaining in there. So so use or possession before or at school.
I see.
I think, yeah, I think the before really just before or needs to be added back in. And then I did send over a few just grammatical type or, you know, tweaks type of thing.
Did you get those, Director Ma?
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you for sending me all those. So I have those on my list for December, or, you know, to try to address these before they come to, before they go to approval. So I appreciate you sending that. I wonder, too, like, the use or possession, so like, at my office, my organization, it is the, not just use or possession of all of that, but like, the, the presence of that, of a controlled substance, toxic substances, you know, so the, having the presence in your person. So I'm just noting that.
And then I found another one that I was questioning. Section 3A, it looks like it's been changed from minor to, or from student to minor. And so now this reads that, where do I start to read it? It's a very long sentence. Chemical abuse, as applied to students and employees, means use of any psychoactive or mood-altering chemical substance without compelling medical reason, in a manner that induces mental, emotional, or physical impairment, and causes socially dysfunctional or socially disordering behavior, to the extent that the minor's normal function in academic school or social activities is chronically impaired. It was changed from students, and I'm just wondering why, because we, of course, have adult students as seniors. And throughout the rest of the document, it references students.
No, that's an excellent question. And I did read that in its full context, too. So I'd, I'd have to dig into it a little bit further, probably talk to MSB, because they're the ones that made that modification. You know, when I think of minors, I think of anybody under the age of 21, when it comes out. So maybe that's what they were referencing, but they talk about substances, too, beyond just alcohol. So, yeah, I don't know.
You've got 623? Is that where we are? 623.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because we're at a, I could read, we could move it. I mean, it'll, we still have a policy committee meeting between now and January.
Yep, you do.
And I would make a motion to move, it's not up there now, 417, to an action item at our January regular meeting, after consideration of the comments heard tonight and incorporation of appropriate grammatical changes. I think that's the end of my motion.
I need a second for that.
A second?
Absolutely.
Before we move stuff to January, one of the topics of discussion for January was keeping January as an organizational meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that that's your intent, is to add action items to the organizational meeting in January.
I was thinking the 25th meeting. I was thinking the actual business meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Just make a trip.
That was the intent of the motion when I said regular business meeting. I think that gives us a little bit more time.
Absolutely, that was my assumption.
To make sure we get those changes in, given that policy meets right before holiday break.
Yep. So with all that clarification, I need a second?
Second.
The second.
Second with a friendly amendment, right?
Yep.
With clarification.
Right, absolutely. Any more discussion? I think we've discussed it pretty well. Okay, all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we can move 623. Any context needed for this?
Yeah, so there is, I mean, there were no comments from last month, but there was a question about section four. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Okay, so the question is, you know, does the school board get a report to review the, you know, mandatory summer school? Well, and if you read the policy in whole and understand how our district works, we don't have mandatory summer school. So no, we won't see that at the board table, unless it does become mandatory, if that makes sense. Pending any questions, I guess I would make a motion to move this to an action item next month.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, sorry.
Discussion for anyone on this. Director Tate?
Yep, I just had two comments. Under 3A, there's two blanks that are in there. I believe those need to be populated with something for clarification.
You know something about this, Director Ma, Dr. Mardal?
So remedial instruction would happen at all grade levels. Make-up and review courses would end up happening at the high school level where credits are involved.
So I just need to fill that in. Okay, great.
Thank you. And then my other one is, under section four, it states, the last sentence states that attachment A is included, but there's no attachment A that I could find in this example or on the website with the policy either.
I did notice that, too.
We wouldn't have an attachment because we don't have a mandatory summer school. The only thing that comes close would be our special education, but all that's guided through individual IEPs. And so that's not something that's going to be put in a board approval process, because it's not necessarily public information.
So then can that just be removed? That line can be removed from the policy?
Well, it can. I think this becomes one of those things where you remove it. I mean, absolutely, it can be removed.
Well, and I would, I'm kind of tempted to, or inclined to say that I would rather keep it in there in the event that we were to have mandatory summer school. Do we foresee that coming? Probably not. But I don't know, I can't, I don't have magic eyeballs. Yes. Director Hadeen had it.
Director Hadeen?
Thank you. I think, I think within the context of the motion, we could consider this paragraph. We do have a demonstrated practice, although I can't think of a specific example, sorry, of not including things that we are not currently doing. I think we've removed a couple of things, a couple of policies, or a couple of statements in policy. So I think it would be more consistent with our past practice to strike paragraph four in its entirety, and then should a mandatory summer school instruction become a component of the district, it would be, it would come forward. And I think it's likely, I mean, that would still fall under the policy 208, where if there's not a current policy, then, you know, administrators would have the authority to operate in best practice, which I have every reason to believe would fall back to this standing policy.
Director Zuzik?
The first, the first half of that sentence reads, following school board approval, the criteria and standards for mandatory summer school instruction will be. So that's the first half of the sentence, and maybe it would be developed by the administration and communicated. Because the intent is to make it clear if that operation ever comes into play.
I see Director Ma typing furiously, so I know she's capturing it. Okay.
Does we have a motion on the table?
We do have a motion on the table. It would have to be the set amendments, though, or the changes. So the second to that would have to be pending the changes that we've discussed, because the original one did not incorporate the changes. So does somebody want to second it with the proposed modifications or edits?
I can resecond.
Thank you, Becky. Okay. So now we've had discussion around it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Public data request 722.
Okay, so section from last month, there was an inquiry about section 4B, subparagraphs one and two, Roman numeral one and two, and what they're referencing. So this is, this would go into effect if the requester of the information was, and I apologize, I know words matter, but the word, if they, if they were not given the information that they asked for, if they were declined that information. So they would be, the Requestor would receive in writing the reason why they can't be provided that information. Does that help clarify it at all? But because this went to legal and they scrubbed it, and said, yep, like, let's, let's keep it like this. You know, the policy committee, we went back and forth on what this particular piece means, and recommend that this policy as written is moved to an action item for next month. Pending any questions.
Questions or comments? Director Zuzik?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on this one? Director Tate?
Yeah, this one, I just had a couple of minor type things that we don't need to discuss, so.
Okay, that's fine. You can touch base if it's something minor a little bit later on. That being said, all those in favor of moving this, oh, we need a motion first. I'm sorry, we did not get a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Our next on our agenda is our consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor approving the consent agenda, press signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to items for individual action, starting with the para irrevocable trust. Okay, so the motion is set the actual determined contribution for the para irrevocable trust per liability study for 222, 324, two amortization period average future service 12, unassigned general fund, 664,644, food service fund, two, 20,293, and community ed fund, four, 24,252, for a total of 709,829.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. That moves us to pension ASL funds contribution. The motion?
So moved.
Second.
I don't even get to read it? Man. No, no, that's fine. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is a replacement elementary literacy resources.
Yeah, so for this one, I'll bring up Ms. Larson, again, to just give an overview of what this is, so that people have an understanding. And/or?
Or Mr. Larson.
Which Larson will it be? He's got this, okay.
Thank you all for having me up. Yes, I will field questions here. I'm Andy Larson. I work in the teaching and learning department as our elementary curriculum coordinator. One of the things that I know has been on a lot of people's radars over the last couple of years is just the change in literacy, especially at our elementary programs, not just here, but nationwide. There's been a great movement towards what people call the science of reading, which is a very strong foundation in phonics, and a more organized way to teach literacy to elementary students. Over the last five years, our teachers at the elementary school have worked incredibly hard to learn a whole new way of, of teaching, especially for our older second, third, and fourth grade teachers, who had no phonics instruction when they were going through college. And so as we've learned all of this, we've learned that many of the resources that we have don't match the needs of our students at this point. One of those needs is decodable resources. So when we're teaching phonics skills to our students, we're having books there that focus on those specific phonics skills, so that they can practice them in context. That's one of the resources that we're looking for that we didn't have before. When we talk about this, we're talking about our small group instruction, not our tier one, all, all student instruction. So it's not a new curriculum we're looking at. It's just a way to help continue to teach the state standards, which is really where we base a lot of our curricular instruction on. The second component is, in a very similar vein, the guided reading books that we're looking at. Those would be available for all of our teachers. The quotables are traditionally K1. The guided reading books that we currently have now are upwards of 12 years old. The teachers have done an incredible job of, of using them and keeping them in good shape. But again, we're at a spot where, as we've learned more, and we've learned more about how books are leveled, how books are not leveled, the resources that we have right now don't match the best leveling system that we know to be true for our students. And so most teachers right now, and all teachers right now, are needing to be able to make curricular decisions based on the books that they want to bring in. And while we've been training them, and they do a magnificent job of doing it, it is hard for teachers to continue to look for different resources that are the best fits for their students. So having a new guided reading library at each of our sites, what allows teachers to be able to just go and select, these books are the perfect match for the students that I'm working with in my small group. Are there any other questions?
What we'll do, Mr. Larson, just type one second. We're going to get a motion in a second, and then that'll open up the floor for any questions the board might have. Okay. I need a first, I need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Larson? Well, after all, that looks like you, there aren't any. So there you go. Thank you, Mr. Larson. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the high school calendar adjustment for testing asynchronous days on March 7.
All right, as you can see in the agenda, what we're looking for is to support the high school in what they've come up with as a plan to accommodate our high school students. And you can see there that there is a plan for ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. This becomes a significant task to pull off all of these assessments on one day. However, the high schools figure out a way to ensure that we are accomplishing MCA testing, ACT, ASVAB, Accuplacer testing for our students in one setting. The importance here is that, for example, some of these tests have to be done, obviously, at the school site, so we have a captive audience. In order to do this, it takes many, many classrooms, upwards of 30 classrooms, in order to pull off all the testing and accommodations that need to happen, which starts to take over even a large building like the high school at once. So that's why the high school is looking for approval, and really just from a transparency standpoint. We wanted to get this out in front of parents sooner than later, because we're going to be soon signing up kids, registering them for these assessments, and we want parents to know well in advance of what the plan is in order to accomplish this, even though March 7 seems like it's a long ways away. But that's why you see asynchronous for ninth grade and asynchronous for 12th grade, unless they so desire to take that eight. so desire to take that ACT. As we really need to clear out that building, make it a giant testing facility, be able to utilize all the staff that we have available to pull off all that we need to do during that time. And so that's why you see a high school calendar adjustment for a testing slash asynchronous day for the high school only on March seventh.
And Dr. Merdell, it would appear that there seems to be a sufficient window for all staff to be up and ready to load whatever they need to in the school logi, whatever tools the kids would be using at that time.
What has been explained to me, which is kind of overviewed here, is that there's a significant plan that's in place and being worked out with the building leadership team at the high school in order to make sure everything is in place and ready to go for March seventh.
Anything else for Dr. Merdell? I did not get a motion yet. I'm sorry. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, brings us to Mr. Zizik. Director Zizik?
I just want to say that this is one of the very few silver linings of COVID, and the fact that our staff now is so nimble that they can change the way that we do business for a day to accommodate this. It's one of the very few silver linings.
That's a good point. Director Mom?
So when I originally saw this, one of the first questions I thought was, why would we have to do asynchronous for ninth grade and part of twelfth grade? But it does make sense after you say the amount of, they have to be proctored, of course. So that does take a lot of classrooms. So thank you for that clarification. Also, I am super happy that this is happening at the schools because when I took the ACT and ASVAB, it was on a Saturday morning on my own time. It's good to see this. Captive audience.
Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up is a revised budget. I think we've already covered this pretty well, right? Okay, so just need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
We'll go straight to a vote because we had questions of Ms. Hubert before. Any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to payable twenty twenty-three levy. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on levy? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to a couple of contracts here quick. First one is a paraprofessional contract.
So the paraprofessional contract, for those that look through it, looks a little bit different than our other contracts in that the negotiation process with this group lends us on a one-year contract rather than a two-year contract. And so you'll see some different values in terms of the retention payment in the single year as well as other dates that are in there. One of the things, a question that came up, is that there are some dates there that reference Ju-, July of twenty twenty-three, and that's because those reference items that are going into effect in all of our, in all of our contracts as of July of twenty-three. And so it seems a little odd in a one-year contract, but it's because it's a, it's a forecasting of what's coming and will be in the, and so we got it into the contract in this round.
Thank you for the context. All right, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Director Tate?
You know there is. So I sent an email today with not getting the contracts until yesterday. Of course, I didn't get to read them today, so I didn't get any response yet, and I totally understand. That was one of my questions about the July first question. I guess my, my concern was, so the language on the signature page states that if there is no contract in place starting July first, the terms and conditions basically continue. And so, but with the verbiage that says that, I can't remember what it was about, but it was about I think it was the monthly VIBA thing. So I guess I was just concerned about that being a little bit conflicting because, for example, if the contract runs out and it's July fifteenth, does, but the, what was that, the VIBA, it goes into place no matter what that verbiage at the end says?
Because that's in the contract now. So this contract stays in place, so that portion of it in July twenty twenty-three shifts the VIBA over regardless of whether we have a new contract or not. That's why it's in the contract.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. And then the other, the other one, or another one, I should say. Page thirty on the signature page, it states the, if I can get to page thirty. On the signature page, it states, for the signatures for the school district, it says chairperson clerk and chief board negotiator. Who is that? We, I don't recall designating a chief board negotiator.
We didn't, and that'll end up being cleaned up as part of the final, it'd be my guess, unless there's some issue that the union wants it to stay as written there. But typically, those signature pages get adjusted, as you've seen in the other contracts, to reflect who exactly is signing the contract for the district and for the collective bargaining group.
And then the appendices, there's, there's several appendices that are in here, and I noticed that most of the contracts we've gotten, the vast majority of the appendices have been struck through so that they're deemed, you know, no longer viable. But I noticed that several of these are not struck through and they aren't referenced in the contract, so are they going to be struck?
Kathy's got that one on the appendices.
Yes, so what we found is in the formatting of the old contracts, the way that information was into the contract, it will not allow us to strike because there were pictures dropped in. And so you'll see in some of them, there's just been a note, this will be removed, see the below. So that's the case with many of those appendixes in the contracts. We've not been able to strike them because they're pictures. That will not be the case in the next round.
Thank you. And then I just noticed there's no signature block on the sick leave bank MOU. I assume that there should be one because I think that has to be signed. Correct?
Same as the other response. Yep, it'll be adjusted.
Okay, and then just like, yeah, and then the rest of it was just formatting stuff. So that, that was, those were my major concerns.
Thank you. So all those in favor of the contract, please signify by saying aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. One last contract, community education paraprofessional contract.
So the community education paraprofessional contract, if, if people look at that one, that will mirror a lot of what we've seen in the other contracts. It's a two-year contract. All the negotiation was within the parameters set by the board, and the, you'll see the similar increases in percentages, similar increases or similar adjustments for the insurance as well as the other benefits along with the retention payments that are in the schedule.
I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Director Tate?
Yes, I just had a few callouts that, so on page four, section six point five, subdivision two, it states language to look at probationary period language in article seven and section one. But I didn't see any probationary period language in that particular article or section. I assume that that should actually be a different article and section to be cleaned up.
Go ahead.
So I have not been through this contract because it was one of them that was worked on. So I check all of the references to the articles when I go through and do the final reviews to make sure they reflect back to the correct ones.
Perfect, thank you. And then, I don't know if this falls into, into that or not. Page eight, section twelve point one, the last phrase is to see seniority listing, but it didn't indicate where. So I didn't know if that was supposed to be in an appendix or if it was supposed to be listed there or if it's provided somewhere else by the district.
So the seniority lists are put out, but they are not. I should check on this one. I can't remember if we have it set up. There were a couple of contracts that we did seniority list different. So now that I'm hearing myself say it out loud, I gotta make sure I'm talking about the right one. So seniority lists are covered in article six, section six point five. Is subdivision one is specific to how the district is going to prepare, maintain, and produce seniority lists. So I would preference that.
All right, and then page sixteen, article seventeen, subdivision one, the second paragraph states, the following CE para employees will be grandfathered in. And again, there's, there's no list of employees. There was a reference that was struck through, but there, there's no, it's just, it's, it alludes to the fact that it's listing somebody and it's not. Then there was just a couple of language things. Oh, and then I noticed in, actually, both of these contracts, the, the holidays are listed out specifically, but when I had asked about that in the superintendent contract a couple of weeks ago, we had said that we were removing the listing of holidays. So I guess I'm wondering, what are the rules with holidays with contracts? Are the different rules for different groups?
No. However, this is something where with Kathy being out and me not tracking everything that I should have in all of the contracts, that was language that we were trying to get in all of the contracts would be similar. And through negotiating, I didn't get that in there. And so we're gonna have some contracts that's still in this round have holidays listed out, and other contracts that we were able to be able to have the new verbiage in. So that one's on me, and if, and Kathy can explain other details.
The other thing that we have to pay attention to with some of these groups, you'll see that these employees get these and these employees get these. And so there are a few of them where we left the holiday language in there. Others where there's a consistent list, in the next round, we'll be transitioning that language. But some of them are there for a reason because of that.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. And then I just, from my understanding, article nineteen, subdivision one, it references appendix B twice. And it seems, to me, I gotta get to the page, sorry. Article nineteen, subdivision one. There. So it says hours per day and rate of pay will be based on a five-year average. It gives an example. The average rate of pay would be used to calculate severance. And then it just says appendix B. But there's only two people listed in appendix B. So I guess I was just confused about, is, is that correct or am I just not understanding what this is saying, quite honestly?
This is one of those languages that's being phased out. So each year, people that retire drop off the list, so we are down to two people eligible in this group.
Okay, thank you.
Only two.
And then the only other, or no. Okay, again, there was this like no signature block on the MOU, that one we talked about last time. The only other one, section twenty point five, new hire training. It, it, it states that the new hire can have, I believe it was fifteen minutes or thirty minutes of conversation about union stuff. And I just want to make sure, other contracts I've seen, the language states that the union will be reimbursing the district for the use of that time because, of course, any union resources, I just want to make sure I didn't see it in this contract, that the union would be reimbursing the district for that time. And I understand there is a lawsuit, actually, that's currently going on regarding this with an Oklahoma pin. So I just want to be very careful about this language.
I can speak to this a little bit. So this is language that we did not address this year, and this is language that's historically been in here. So that would be something we need to look into in the future. This is not, currently, they are not reimbursing for the fifteen minutes.
So I guess my concern then is, I mean, obviously, the lawsuit hasn't come to a conclusion yet. But the potential of litigation with us for using taxpayer funds to fund union activities is a concern and a call out for me because it is, I don't believe that that's legal. That's why there's a lawsuit, right?
Well, I think that's where we would rely on when, this is the difference between suggesting that something's legal before case law comes out and changes how we do things. So if case law suggests that that's the direction that we need to go, legal will definitely be telling us, you need to make sure you're going through this in all your contracts and getting it changed. It might also, at that point, this is where, as we continue to talk about, and this was what I was gonna say earlier, I think Kathy and I talked today, I think we're, we're gonna probably try to work to retitle in practice the difference between collective bargaining agreements and contracts because they're two different things. Point being that this would be a point in time where we would work with this union to come up with an MOU. To say, all right, this, this case law has happened. We need to make an MOU so that the contract is not in violation of statute. And typically, when, when you have a good working relationship with your unions, that's what you're able to do. And that way, that gets you out of that predicament of potentially having litigation that was unintended.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to also add, if you look at article twenty-one, there is also a savings clause. And I know carry legal has been something that you've brought up in the past. There is a contract or a clause in here that says, if there are provisions in this contract that are found to be illegal, they will be void, and it will be up to us to renegotiate language with the union then. So I believe that should address that issue.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Dr. Merdell. So all those in favor? We didn't get a motion, didn't we, a while back? It was a while, it was a while, but we did, we did. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we have all of our policies, we've gone through all their iterations up for approval. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on our policy up for approval? Director Mom?
So one of the things that I want to note on here, it is totally procedural, but I just want to clarify because if I say it out loud, I will be committed to it. So imploring the, the policy committee, along with administration, that the idea is that, so first read, second read, we would have like the line, the red lines, right? Focusing on context. And then when it goes to approval, that it would be cleaned up, ready to come to the board, and then ready to go on to our website. I do want to note on here that there are quite a few policies that don't have page numbers, so I have an email drafted so that we can make sure that before they go on to the website, assuming these are gonna be approved, that we are making those corrections. So that is my commitment to the board and the community that we are going to make sure that they all are uniform because that looks and reads so much better.
Well, we'll just approve based on what you just said, and we'll make sure to do it. No problem at all. Yes, Dr. Merdell?
I think that's a great thing to point out. I would also suggest, however, that things like page numbers aren't something that you have to wait for the board to approve another policy. If you're going along and you say, this policy is really long, can we just add page numbers? That is not a substantive change to the policy, doesn't change anything in how the policy works. You, you don't need to wait to do that. Major formatting, I would recommend you don't do that, even though it's not substantive to the, the policy. But I think it's a good practice. I just think if you get your, I don't want people to think that you gotta wait to change something like page numbers for the board to vote on a, for a review cycle.
Yes, Director Beisel?
I just want to thank the policy committee. You guys do a fantastic job. I just want to thank you guys who got called out. You guys put a lot of work into all these. So I just want to call out the policy committee.
Very appreciated. So all those in favor of the policy up for approval, please signify by saying aye? Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Oh. I'm sorry.
Discussion. I didn't, I, I'm sorry. I didn't realize we were voting on these all at once. I thought we were voting on them individually.
They are rolled up into kind of like similar to our consent agenda.
Okay, I didn't, we haven't done this before, I guess. I, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I do have comments.
Okay.
A couple of specific ones. Five oh nine specifically, as I said before, I have concerns with this one. Five, yes, five oh nine. Five oh six, sorry. Yes, five oh six. I have serious concerns about moving forward with this right now. Let me get my notes. Formatting issues, there's some weird spacing, like kind of all throughout the thing, which that's minor, but the one is, and this is, I know we're going to have a conversation about sexually explicit materials, but there's a few portions in here that, there's one that are just concerning, and it seems like we're creating a gray area. Free speech and expression under responsibilities, it says, "Students are responsible for expressing opinions, publishing written materials, and distributing literature in such a manner that is not libelous, obscene, discriminatory, or sexually explicit." So we're saying that students, students can't do this, but yet we're providing this material. So I know we're going to have a conversation eventually, but I wanted to point that out. And then, under the gender identity portion, it states that students have the right to be identified by their preferred name, pronoun, and asserted gender in school records, learning spaces, facilities, and extracurricular activities consistent with Board policy and procedures. So because this is a discipline policy, this is a concern for me, based on recent, there's been several recent legal cases that have gone through regarding religious freedoms around this area. So I'm just, I just want to point out, we have to be very careful in this space. And then, I guess I have a question around learning and academic work. Under responsibilities, there's, students are responsible, et cetera, and then there's just a, the last bullet point is avoid inaccuracies in publications. To me, publications, the definition of a publication is something that is actually published and for sale. And so I would like to see that spelled out, as far as what does that mean? Does that mean like students writing a paper for a class? Or does this mean the school newspaper? Or what exactly does this mean, so that it's spelled out there for them? The next one, the student, under the student dress, the rights and opportunities, "Students have the right to choose their manner of dress and personal grooming unless it presents a clear danger to the student's health or safety, causes interference with schoolwork, or creates classroom or school disruption." Again, I just want to say that we need to be very cautious about this, because, because of the right to freedom of expression and freedom of speech. So if somebody's wearing a shirt that causes a disruption, you know, but they, obviously, they do still have the right to freedom of expression, so I want to make sure we're careful on that. Then we have, under technology usage and safety, this goes back again to my comment about sexually explicit materials. Under there, it states that students are responsible for ensuring that any digital content on district technology resources is school-appropriate. So again, we're offering sexually explicit materials in certain classrooms and stuff, but yet we're defining this as what is school-appropriate. So what is school-appropriate? Then, this one, I find that this is conflicting language. The Code of Student Conduct, it's Section 6, A, number 9. It states, "Using, possessing, distributing, intending to distribute, making a request to another person for solicitation, or being under the influence of narcotics, drugs, or other controlled substances, except as prescribed by a physician." So there, it says that, you know, you're fine if it's prescribed by a physician. But the next portion is, "Or look-alike substances, these prohibitions include medical marijuana or medical cannabis, even when prescribed by a physician." So this is within the same, same sentence? Exception, okay. So am I, am I lost on this, or?
I'm reading correctly.
Okay. Okay. And then, this one, again, this is under the same section, number 28. Again, it says, "Student attire or personal grooming which creates a danger to health or safety, or creates a disruption to the educational process." Again, I'm just concerned about First Amendment rights with freedom of expression. And then, this portion, I do believe definitely needs to be reworded. It's a very long sentence, I'll just read the whole thing, I guess. "Student attire or personal grooming which creates a danger to health or safety, or creates a disruption to the educational process, including clothing which bears a message which is lewd, vulgar, or obscene, apparel-promoting products or activities that are illegal for use by minors, or clothing containing objectionable emblems, signs, words, objects, or pictures communicating a message that is racist, sexist, or otherwise derogatory to a protected minority group, or which connotates gang membership." So, one question, is this phrase, one big phrase, of clothing containing objectionable emblems, signs, words, objects, or pictures communicating a message that is racist, sexist, otherwise derogatory? Is that all one thing? Or is it kind of two things, saying clothing containing objectionable emblems, signs, words, objects, or pictures communicating a message that is racist, sexist, et cetera? Because what I'm getting at is clothing containing objectionable emblems, signs, words, objects, somebody may find, for example, across objectionable. And again, we're going back to that whole freedom of expression concern. So, I don't know if, I guess, do we know if this is all one? It's all one, okay. So then, my concern is that we're saying that if clothing is worn with these objectionable things that are racist, sexist, or otherwise derogatory, it's only an issue if it is regarding a protected minority group. So the way that this reads right now is that somebody could wear something that is racist toward a majority group, and it would be acceptable. So I think that this needs to be updated to read racist, sexist, or otherwise derogatory to anyone, versus just the protected minority group.
The issue will be is that it's, there's not a way to be racist to a group that isn't a protected minority group?
I would...
That's kind of the definition of it.
So somebody could wear a shirt saying, for example, "White Cracker," and that isn't offensive?
That's a different, that's entirely a different situation. So the intent with discipline, so maybe I can cover a couple of things here. So the intent with the way the discipline policy is written, and Director Zuzik, you'll have plenty of experience with this as well, is, one, to talk to the issue of free speech. While students enjoy a large amount of free speech at school, they do not continue to have all the levels of free speech that they would out in public, which is why the policies get written the way that they are written, which is why the terms disruptive are used, which is why the terms around creating an environment that is, I'll just say, less than conducive to the learning, that is the threshold. And the threshold is subjective, and that's why we have administrators that are allowed to make those subjective decisions based upon what is happening. There's plenty of case law that's surrounding that, all the way back to Tinker. That's where it's grounded in. So that's the free speech thing. That's why it's worded that way, that's why it's, you'll find that in many, if not almost all, discipline policies, is how that verbiage is worded. I suppose you could make an argument, and so now that I'm understanding what your question was, which seemed to be with regard to all the commas and stuff, I have, well, I suppose we could take a look at putting commas in different places. I can tell you, in 26 years, I have never had an issue arise around that statement in a discipline policy of someone being confused about what is meant by any of that stuff, or taking it out. So I don't have, I guess I explain it that way, because I have zero concern about it, the way that it's written. I don't have any, and I would also, again, like I said, I defer to Director Zuzik, having been a principal as well, and a superintendent in a previous role, if I'm incorrect in my assumption on that, but that's been my experience.
Dr. McDowell, I agree with what you're saying, I would comment that it's different at different grade levels. And so that goes back to an earlier question or comment about, you know, when we read through the handbooks for elementary, for middle school, for high school, we're going to see that each, a policy like this is operated differently at different sites. And that, I think, helps in the understanding of how diversely policies are implemented throughout a district, based on the developmental level of the child. But I agree, this, I do understand that they're talking about clothing throughout the entirety of that very long sentence. I do understand that, you know, lewd and vulgar and obscene are subjective.
And the only other piece I would add, I'm processing the, the comment about the clothing, is in the general sense, to your question about a student wearing a shirt that says "White Cracker," that could be offensive to some students. And that's how we would address that, is as an offensive shirt to students, otherwise causing a disruption, or interfering with that student's ability to learn because of what's going on. So even though it might not fall under that specific definition of racist, that doesn't mean that it would be something that wouldn't be addressed as an offensive item, which happens a lot in schools. That is actually one of the issues that happens in schools, that principals struggle with a lot, is trying to make sure that we have freedom of speech up to a point that doesn't offend and impact other people's ability to learn.
And that's anyone. And that's literally anyone, because I've heard that term twice in the last five minutes, and it's uncomfortable for me. It doesn't even direct it at me, and I don't like it. So I can't imagine a child being permitted to pull that stunt, I just can't. So, I do see your point about how it seems like all of it rolls up and goes into this one targeted class. I see, I see what you're saying, I get what you're saying. But I think they'd actually extract and say, "Look, you cannot do that," you know, period. "I don't care who you are, you're not going to wear that shirt." Because it's vulgar, it's, it can be considered offensive, it fits a lot of the categories, so.
Okay, I guess so, so we're, I mean, I'm not, I'm still not comfortable with this language being in here to be only targeted toward a small group, I think it should be universal toward anyone. But that's my opinion. The other question that I had, in Section 8, it talks about removal of students from class. It's not its own section, I guess it's under A, it's under A, but it's beneath 4. It states that a student will, a student must be removed from class immediately if the student engages in assault or violent behavior. Now, when we did the tour of one of the elementary schools, we witnessed where the class was evacuated versus pulling the student out. So this is conflicting with what I've been told, I guess, or is, please explain.
So if you read further to Section C, which is further down in the policy, you will see that while it says "must be removed immediately," it also says in C that a building and/or, I don't have the exact verbiage, but a building has the ability to organize its procedures and strategies of how it's going to handle this. So.
Okay, so then there, so then there, okay, so their procedure trumps, but not really the policy. It falls within it.
It doesn't, it doesn't trump it, I think it's a, it's an oversimplified view to say that a student, that the solution to a problem is that a student is going to be removed from this situation, and that's the only way that we handle this. What the intent is, is to remove the general population and the student from one another? And when you combine a school building and 30 other kids, it might be more efficient if you have a procedure in place to remove an entire class, so that the class can continue to teach, than to try and snag a kid, because I've seen it happen, out of a classroom in front of kids, and create trauma for everybody. So it isn't about trumping. It isn't, it's an oversimplified view of it. It's the reason why policy sets a direction of what we believe we need to do, and management handles it as a procedural scope of operation.
Okay, with that, I guess I was just wondering if the policy should be updated to reflect what we actually prefer to do in action?
And I would say, this is the reason why the Administration said, there has been, A, no confusion over how we're going to do it, there have been no issues with how we're going to handle it, and therefore, we don't have any reason to suggest a change at this point in time.
I was just going to add, there are instances where, for example, if it is a special education student, there is a rule that you cannot put hands on a child, that's a case where you have to evacuate the classroom. So, back to each situation is different, that will be the case almost every time when you have a child who's under an IEP, and there's a plan for how to address it.
Yep, I got that. Thank you. Then, there's a section, under Section 9, dismissal, D, expulsion and exclusion procedures. It lists out the process regarding a hearing, and all of this, the, like I said, the expulsion and exclusion procedures, it lists out all of the details about how many days this has to happen, this has to happen within so many days, and all of this. And overall, there's no classification, or there's no specification on whether it means calendar or business days, but there are some that refer to calendar days specifically. And so I just, I think that for absolute clarification, I think it should be added in here to be either calendar, or business, or school days, or whatever that should be.
I can appreciate that, however, this is a section that is taken directly out of Minnesota Pupil Fair Dismissal Act, and so it's worded exactly how it's worded in the act that is out there under statute.
So then, we should, I guess we should assume it's calendar days, because that would be the most conservative.
No, it's actually student contact days for that one, because that is specific, what you're, the days you're talking about are the days for hearings, and it only applies to expulsions. And honestly, the reason why it's not a concern in this situation is, if a student is in this situation with us as a district, we are working in tandem with lawyers at this point, because of the seriousness of the event, and so the lawyers keep you on track, having experienced this several times with families and attorneys, it's, there will be no mistake in what the deadlines are.
Thank you. I don't know. Nope, that's it. Other than that, I, this, this policy, there's quite a bit of formatting, things that need to be done to be cleaned up, and so I would like to move that this policy specifically be sent back to the Policy Committee, just for cleanup.
Sorry, is there a second to that? Motion on the table, one second, we have to clear the whole, we have to deal with the first motion first. We have to deal with our first motion, that's on table now. I said we have to deal with the motions on table, as Director Ma, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment, I did receive your notes on 506, so noting that this is an annual policy, so we can take your comments and take a look at it for this coming year. I personally would not support putting it back to policy right now, because the question that I want to know is, is there any confusion, and are there any concerns about this policy not working, which the answer is no, which is why there's no recommendations to change anything at this point? Noting, however, that you brought up some good points. And so I guess I would want to see this approved, and then going into this next year, to see if we need to take a look at those items.
Director Tate?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to my comment when we spoke about Policy 208, and the fact that this doesn't, we only do seek policies once every year to three years. And I don't feel like having it up on one agenda for vote tonight is doing the due diligence with allowing the public to possibly get us feedback, because they've basically known, I mean, the same with us, right? We've only known that this policy was up for approval since Friday night. We've only known that this policy was up for approval since Friday night, essentially. And since this is our one chance for the year to make any tweaks, to have, to receive any input, to do any of that, I don't think between Friday night and Wednesday night that that is sufficient. I don't feel like we're doing due diligence if that's what we're doing with the policy, especially this, I mean, like I said, all policies are important. This one is tremendously important and impacts everybody.
Director Zuzik?
I would just comment that this is just a bear of a policy, no matter what district you're in, or, or what your, you know, what your thoughts are about particular verbiage. This policy is huge. It's, it's probably the most complex policy in any district, the 506s. And, and I appreciate the comment about let's, let's make all of the formatting changes and, and get it in good shape before we see it again. And to that end, I'd be very supportive of that. I'm reticent to change things in 506 that are substantive, because the way that I see this is as the rule manual for the game, and the game lasts the length of a school year. And that's why 506 is typically, and ideally, reviewed over the summer. And I think that that would be our intent in the future, is to, is to get it up for annual review in the summer, and for whatever reason, that wasn't done. And so we just, it is an obligation of ours to update the policy annually. And so I think that's probably the effort to, to put it in as quickly as, as it came up. So I, I wouldn't be supportive of very many substantive changes, but I, I don't see any harm or fault in waiting to, to see a final layout. Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to call a previous question, which is the motion to approve these policies.
Call the question. That means all conversation stops and we vote. Continue to talk, right? That's what I'm getting you doing, you're gonna take a vote? So call the question, we're taking a vote on whether we want to continue conversation or go to a vote. We'll start on this side. Director Maum. It's not a roll call vote?
No.
Surprising. Okay. All right, so then I will just ask all those in favor of stopping conversation and voting now, please signify by saying aye. Okay, those opposed? Motion passes, we're gonna vote right now. All those in favor of passing the policies up for approval, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five to one. All right, requests for future topics. I know we've got a very full slate already of topics that we've been trying to lay out and get out there. I know that the board has been sent some drafts of where we're sitting in terms of that, and the future topics and how they're laid out currently in the calendar to some extent for the, at least the next couple of months. Is there anything in particular that somebody wants to put out there that hasn't been out I'm sorry, Director Tate?
I just have a request. Could we, could we as the board get a list of those topics in advance, just so that there's more time to prepare?
No, what we'll do is we'll take, what we'll do is we'll get over to you what, kind of where everything sits, and this, I thought we had gotten that up, but my apologies, and see where everybody's feeling about it, oh, this is missing, or, oh, can that be a little earlier? Whatever it happens to be, we can certainly get that done.
Thank you. The other, the other question, this is more of a question versus a motion. We, I, I feel like we left things up in the air on the superintendent performance review, or performance evaluation document. I don't think that we felt we got to real closure on that. We had a discussion, and then I don't think we actually made a decision. So is that one of the topics that is coming up very soon?
It is. Okay, with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn. We just talked about future, oh, future meetings, good lord, I'm on the wrong, sorry about that, folks, future meetings. So the next thing we've got coming up is our, it's on the seventh, I don't know, I thought it was earlier. Anyway, we've, we, there's a policy, it's not on here, the, there's a policy committee meeting on 12/15. Beyond that, we'll have our organizational meeting on January 4th, and then we're working on getting a work session somewhere in the month of January. The business meeting is on January 25th of 2023. So the next time we'll be together as a, as a body will be on January 4th. Yes, Director Maum?
Did we ever specify when we're gonna have that work session? In January? Can we solidify that, please? I don't know if now is the appropriate time, or?
If I might. So what collectively I thought that I heard was that there was a potential interest in, on the fourth, to have a work session that potentially started earlier, so it would go from like five to seven, and then do only organizational meeting stuff, that's why I asked the question earlier, only organizational meeting stuff from seven to eight, and get through just your organizational stuff on the fourth of January, and then save all the business stuff for that 25th? That's all I think we need to know, is do we want to just keep the one date and take two hours and get us through as much as you can in those two hours, and then bump that organizational meeting back to a 7:00 PM, assuming you're gonna go seven to eight, and just organizational stuff and call it good?
Depends, I mean, there's, the only reason we were talking about additional work sessions is because it's just a lot of stuff to get done. That's what we talked about, putting an additional work session in the month of January, just because of how much we had to get done, was why the conversation came up. And my preference would be to do the org meeting first and then the work session, because we know how long the org meeting will take. The work session can start to fluctuate a little bit.
My understanding is the org meeting cannot go any earlier than six? Or am I rolling that over from Truth and Taxation? I think I saw, is it, is that the one that has to be after six? So I was looking at your slides, Jen, just to point that out.
Yeah, but no, but yeah, but we, I would propose to do organizational first and work session.
I think the question was, because I've seen multiple emails about this, is are we gonna do it on the fourth? We can debate which goes first. Are we blocking time on the fourth to do a work session with our org meeting? I don't think we can do it on the 11th, because I think we got some people going to pre-conference MSBA stuff. So that's off. Then it, so it's either gonna be the fourth or the 18th.
Well, with the Congress, the way the conversation went was, was incorporating a work session into that organizational meeting once we got that established, but then saying we may have too much work to do to not have another work session that month. That's what, the way the conversation went.
You want to have two work sessions in January?
That's what we had discussed, potentially.
I did not follow the conversation that way. But, so I appreciate your comment, Stephanie, that this needs to be, to the extent practical lockdown. Can we block? Are people available on the fourth to, to make it a three-hour thing?
I mean, we're set, you know, that's the biggest, that's the big question.
Can we do a three-hour thing on the fourth?
Which would, which would fold the org additional meeting into that, right?
It's gonna be two to seven.
Org meeting for an hour, work session for two hours.
I don't care what order, I don't care what order it is.
Okay, so, so we all can do that, and then maybe we don't need the additional work session until the business meeting.
Starting at five?
That's the, that's the question. That's the question, if you were to do the work session first, would you want to start
So we're at 5:00 on the fourth. I'm gonna leave it to the current chair and superintendent to determine which is which.
So in order to start at five, the work session has to go first?
No. I was, I was intuiting some Truth and Taxation stuff, it can start whenever. Jen is a very powerful influencer, just like to point out.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at, and then we, I guess for the time being, then we'll just table the additional work session idea for that month. And then just count on that, and then the January 25th business meeting.
Since we have everybody at the table, does it matter? Would people prefer to do the work, the organizational meeting stuff first and then go into a work session to whenever? Or do you want to have a work session for two hours and knowing you got to stop at two hours and then do org?
I prefer the org meeting first, because you don't know how, you don't know how the flow of the work session is gonna go.
For posting purposes, we should, we'd probably start the org meeting at a specific time, and the work session can just be posted as following.
Correct. Director Tate?
I guess my, my opinion is that we still start at 6:00 PM. I don't know why we would start an hour earlier, but...
I prefer that earlier, just because of life. It gets late.
So we can just figure out how many people want to do 5:00, 5:30, or whatever, and who wants to do six, and just do it that way. Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Who would be ready to start at five?
It's fine.
Okay. We can say who's ready to start at six, but it's gonna be two to five, so...
Director Tate, what she said is noted, but if everyone else wants five, that's fine.
Work meeting at five?
Work session, focusing.
Six o'clock work session, correct. There we go. And then business meeting on the 25th. All right.
Please come on the fourth with calendars, because we'll, we'll look at our board calendar, right?
Yes, we will.
But we have got to do another work session, I think. Not a work session, retreat.
Yes, just bring your, bring your calendar so we can start talking about that stuff during the org meeting as well. So yeah, we got something done there on the meetings, that's great. In terms of that, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned.